At Dever Memorial Chapel.
Good evening. Welcome to Tuesday, April 12th, 2022 Selectors Meeting. All the select men, well, the board is here. We have Noah on Zoom, we have the Town Manager, is Patty, the Town Clerk, we have the Town Planner. Please stand with me and salute the flag.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, omnipotent, eternal.
We need the approval of the meeting minutes for our March 22nd meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? If not, I'll go through the roll. Is Mike?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself as a yes. There's public comment. Do we have any public comment tonight? No public comment. We had no public hearing. Reports of committees. I do want to take a couple minutes here. I'm not really a committee. I just want to do a brief rundown of the workshop that the Select Board had with the Planning Board a couple weeks ago. The impetus for this was, is there was a call for moratoriums and bans on solar parks and on cannabis and subdivisions, and we decided that we should sit down with the Planning Board and discuss this and try to work our way through this. I thought we had a lot of good information on that.
Yeah.
That workshop is a lot was covered. I'm gonna say right now that, right now, it doesn't look like we have any moratoriums on the horizon. I just want, I want to make a couple, couple points about, you know, the whole call for moratoriums. You know, we start with the solar arrays or solar farms. Most people don't realize that we have solar farms already approved in Burwick. And we have another one in the works, is if you ask people where these solar farms are, most of them can't tell you where they are. If I remember correctly, two of them, two of them are proposed for Route 236 and one just off of Route 9, one at the end of Hubbard Road out towards Lebanon. Years ago, when we were going over our comprehensive plan and our zoning, we looked at where we wanted to have growth, commercial growth and business growth, and Route 4, 236 and Route 9 were all made in there. So, these, these facilities proposed coming off of 236 and Route 9, you know, is they're called solar farms, solar arrays, but really, to me, they're more of an industrial or a commercial thing. And if somebody came to Burwick and bought 40 acres off of Route 9 and decided they want to put in a factory like Pratt &amp; Whitney or something like that, I think we'd be having a much different conversation here. It's still development, it's still 40 acres, it's still impervious service, surface and runoff, but it would change the topic, it changed the tone of this, the conversation, I think. And the same thing with cannabis. You know, there are people that are upset and think we need to, you know, ban it, outlaw it, put a moratorium on it, cap it. But if we had four microbreweries in town and two more wanted to come in, would we be saying we need a cap? Do we need a moratorium? Do we need a ban?
They put a cap on pizza joints in Summersworth last week, didn't they?
There's, so, you know, we have microbreweries.
That's Summersworth.
Instead of cannabis facilities, so there's a difference there, but it would change the tone just a little bit more. Instead of saying we have four microbreweries, we have four bars. Now, all of a sudden, you're saying we have four bars and two more bars are coming in. It's a much different conversation. So, we have to look at the way these things are put out there. And the same thing with the subdivisions, is really, we've had very few major subdivisions over the last several years. You know, it seems like one or two maybe every year or so. But what people don't talk about is the 20 or 30 houses that go in on individual lots. You know, just as many as a subdivision, but you don't talk about it. And some of these, some of these people, there are large landowners in Burwick that have lots of different lots, and they can come in, and they have been coming in, and putting houses on these lots. So, is that a subdivision in its own right? So, I just, these are things that, you know, people need to talk about, people need to think about when we're talking about these moratoriums and how we're talking about them. You know, we live in a democratic capitalist society. We make our rules by voting. If people want to change things, come down and make proposals. Come down and work with the Planning Board. Come down and work with planning and make these changes. Work with us. But then again, we're capitalists, and people are supposed to have the ability to make money on their properties. So, who are we to stop people from making money on their properties? You know, a lot of people that I see and hear about complaining is most of them are living in houses that were built in the last 20 years, and they haven't been here 20 years. You know, so, when do we do that retroactive moratorium? 20 years ago? You know, people are moving into town constantly, and I think that, for the most part, it's a big asset to Burwick. Look, look at the board here. Look at the Planning Board. Look at the volunteers that come into Burwick, and they move to Burwick specifically because of what's going on here. It's a positive thing. So, I think that, you know, working together as a community, as a town, through the processes we have, is that we can work this through, and we can continue growing, but in a controlled fashion. That's my rant for the night, I guess.
No, that was good, Tom.
Well, like I said, it's just a matter of context. When you start talking about, you know, moratoriums and bans, is, you know, you have a moratorium for one thing, why not a moratorium for another thing? And then a moratorium for another thing. And, you know, that's not the way we, you know, move forward. All right. Reports of departments we had. Well, we haven't had a chance to go over that. It was just handed to us, so, that's something I think we need to, you know, look at and talk about. Appointments, presentations and other guests. We have an appointment for the Planning Board for an alternate member. Now, this is kind of confusing because a couple weeks ago, we had the same thing, and we had one African here and not the other, and tonight, we have one African here and not the other. Is John Lapierre Jr. came down last time. He was here, has expressed his desire, and Matthew Henry at that time couldn't come down. I'm assuming you are Matthew Henry?
That is I.
Could you please step to the podium?
Good thing.
And let's hear what you have to say.
Well, first of all, nice to meet you all face to face. My name is Matthew Scott Henry. I've had a family, natives in town. I don't know if you've read my letter of intent.
Oh, yeah.
Essentially, this is it in person. Really, I didn't know where home was, but Burwick's always been my home. I have two employees for the business that I own off Hubbard Road, 467 Hubbard Road is the house that I own. I just put up a medical marijuana facility, and really, I'm just here to fight the good fight. James knows that. I've told him that before. I have, I'm very neutral when it comes to politics, so, I think, and I'm very, I have a college education, fourth degree of science degree. I'm college educated, you know, I'm very neutral when it comes to politics. I see myself as a good chair, a good seat at the chair, to be honest. I'm not biased on anything, you know. I agree with what you just said about how moving forward, you know, moratoriums, microbreweries, I completely agree with what you just said. But, yeah, essentially, I'm just here to fight the good fight. I'm young, I might be young to a lot of you, but at some point, you know. Young people are gonna have to take over, so. You know, I do want to get my foot in the door, whether it be here or somewhere else. And yeah, I do look forward to working with the town of Burwick, you know, as I am a taxpayer and I own a business here, and both of my employees are Burwick residents. Yeah, I'm welcome. Any questions, please, by all means.
Jared? It's a great place to, to learn a lot of stuff about what's going on in town, upcoming projects, stuff like that, but it's also a lot of, you're interacting with a lot of the public and sometimes not on their best day. Are you good with dealing with the public in that sense?
I, yes.
Are you okay with possibly getting verbally abused and, you know, beaten up for?
Listen, listen, I've taken much worse. I can promise you that. Not to laugh, yes, I can, I can deal with it, with a verbal abuse.
I'm not saying you will get verbally abused. I'm just saying, it's happened. You know, you want to, you want to make sure that people have the right temperament for it.
Yes, I'm 100%, 1,000% positive. I can be verbally abused and not go home and cry about it.
Well, put that to the test.
Put that to the test. Go for it right now.
No. Any other questions for Matt? Is, um.
I think I guess I gotta follow up with Mike. I mean, I'm thinking, but he wasn't here at the last meeting. Didn't allow Mr. Lapierre to speak at the last meeting.
Right, right. Yeah. Yeah, well, I was gonna, I was gonna speak about that. You can sit down now if you'd like. You know, we've had two people. I, I'm pretty sure John Lapierre Jr. is still interested in being on. He hasn't said otherwise. And, you know, we did, we did give, you know, Matt the opportunity to come and speak. And I, I know a little bit of the backstory here, is I know that Matt had expressed an interest, you know, earlier in being on the Planning Board, and, you know, he was asked to get his letter of intent in, and in the interim, is John got his in. You know, I see John's dated on March 15th, and Matthew's is dated March 21st. So, even though I know you had expressed intent before, is officially, John is the one that got his letter of intent in first, so.
Was that cut off then?
No, there isn't, but it is, in the past, we've, we've looked at that, you know, in, in seeing who had the, the, you know, asked first about it. But, is, again, I think that we need to find out if John is still interested and give him the opportunity to come down here. It's only fair, and we did the same thing for Matt, so, if you want to come back again for another meeting.
Yeah, I was gonna say, my suggestion is, Matt, if you're okay coming back to the next meeting, if we could touch base with John.
Not a problem.
Just to make, I, I think it's just fair to give both an opportunity to have questions together.
Absolutely. Quality is my thing. Absolutely.
So, so I guess this one's gonna be on the table again. So, yeah, if you can get in touch with John and just see if he's still interested and find out. All right. Thank you. Is, that brings us to unfinished business. We have nothing under that right now. It's Town Manager's report.
A request for qualifications was sent out to three firms that have knowledge of the downtown. We've heard back from two firms who are seriously interested. The process is, I'd like to put together a interview team and maybe a panel of five, a Select Board member or two on that group, interview the firm, then come back with a recommendation to the entire board. This engineer firm will help pretty much manage the $3 million that we've got, help fully engineer the projects, help sequence, interface with the different entities, CMP, Great Falls Construction. Also, they will help us go out and seek further grant funding as part of that request for qualification. So that's coming soon. There'll be more on that at the next meeting. I dropped off a memo on the Best More property, and what happened is, this more, when it was terminated payment, she said she was not prepared to pay the legal fees and the taxes for this year. So, we discussed with legal, and there's a proposed amended agreement. And this would help facilitate a $24,000 payment in the short term, but also ensure that we have leverage to ensure that, once the payment's made, and we'll get, we'll be able to recoup our legal fees. So, the proposed amendment is to pay off the $23,925 in debt that the closing town will agree to transfer to the Saks Alinda in exchange for a promissory note backed in town, the collateral of which is a mortgage on the property. We have conveyed the promissory note guarantee. Payment of remaining balance, $4,500 in due taxes and attorney's fees to date. So, I'm just looking for a motion to approve the amended agreement on 17 Cranberry Meadow Road as recommended by legal counsel.
I'll make the motion to approve the amended agreement on 17 Cranberry Meadow Road as recommended by legal counsel.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Further discussion? You had a couple of questions, James?
Yep.
So. So, I'm just looking over this. We, we get the nearly $24,000. Okay. Just going over this again, first time I've really seen it. So, is, when, when exactly will the town be getting their money? It looks like she's, she's looking to sell the property or transfer ownership. Is that it?
So, the town currently owns it. It's part of the old land installment purchase.
Right.
We have, and this has been going on for two to three years now.
Right.
And through media, it's been ongoing mediation and renovation. This agreement helps prevent kind of starting that cycle over again. It allows the lump payment, which they have, and once they have the property in their ownership, they're able to go out and secure further funding to be able to pay off the subsequent fees.
Okay.
Yeah, so this, this cuts it out the lawyers and the mediation and everything all over again for a second cycle.
Right.
And we all know how expensive it is.
In time, I assume.
Many further discussion?
No.
I'll go through the roll. Is Mike?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself as a yes.
Last piece I have is on a proposed credit enhancement agreement, and this is to meet the goal of a stabilized taxes for the proposed, for the budgeted buyer of 10 School Street, the old fire station. I think it's a, it's a good deal for the town. The property right now, the property value we see is zero because it's town-owned property. Once it goes to a public or privately-owned property, it's close to $700,000 of value. When they make a credit enhancement agreement, it has a built-in incentive where they get, for 11 years, anything above $700,000 in the value, they get back their taxes. So, it stabilizes the taxes that they pay. But again, we see that first $700,000 in revenue. So, there's a hearing scheduled for the 26th. I'll have, look and finalize the documents with the purchaser, and that's to meet the purchase and sale and try to get everything wrapped up and keeping it on track so they can close the property. Any questions on?
Everything seems to be going forward with the sale of the lease.
Yep.
So.
The final sales, $700,000?
No. No, the assessed value.
Yeah, the sales, actually, less.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, it is, we had it assessed at nearly $700,000, and that's the only thing they talked about with, you know, with the sale. The sale price was less than that, but, you know, the buyer is agreeing to have it assessed at the $700,000.
Okay. I, I, I get, I just.
Yep. Other questions for James? I have nothing under Fortman's Communications and account payable. Payroll warrant number 59 for March 31st, 2022, for the amount of $75,482.76. We have a payroll warrant number 60 for April 7th, 2022, for the amount of $86,319.80. We have a account payable warrant number 62 for April 12th, 2022, for the amount of And we have a payroll warrant number 61 for April 14th, 2022, for the amount of $71,792.68. I'll make the motion that we pay our bills.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll go through the roll. Is Mike?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself as a yes. That brings us to new business, foreclosed property bids on 46 Route 236. There we go. All right. We had eight returns. I'm gonna read down through them. Is, we have one from Mark Von Nutka, I guess, $7,686. William Dame for the amount of $32,600. John Corless for the amount of $55,000. Paul Kennedy for the amount of $50,365. Michael Garriels, Garrios, is for the amount of $51,101.1. He likes his ones. Lucille Moran for the amount of $40,000. James Guy for the amount of $30,028. And Lisa Rusholo for the amount of $12,760.
He had a bid one cent. He really, he must be good with the prices right now. I bet he wins all those.
Just trying to say, just trying to guess what people are gonna bid and trying to get that extra penny, right?
Well.
I would, I would love if somebody had matched his bid exactly, but it was off by one penny, and that was the deciding factor.
You imagine.
Is, when I first got back on the board, we doing bids for one of the trucks in the Highway Department, and Guy, every, every bitty of the product was 1, 2, 3, 4, 1, 2, 3, 4, $1,234 or $12.34. It was always the same. So, you know, I guess that answers our questions we had about whether we needed to put it out for a realtor or anything. It looks to me like, you know, John Corless is the high bid. Is, I don't know of any reason not to award it to him.
That amount, let's see, you had, Noah, is $55,000, correct?
Right. Yep.
I think that's a probably, that's a good amount. I think probably based on previous discussions, looking at the property, if we did get a realtor involved and ended up having to pay their fees, we probably would not be much more ahead than where we are at, so.
No, I agree. No, because whoever buys it has to deal with the trailer and everything on it, so that's a cost to them. Do we have a motion?
I move that we accept the bid for the property on 236, it's 236, right?
Yep.
Yes.
For $55,000 from John Corless?
Yes.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All right. I'll go through the rolls. Is Mike?
Yep.
Noah?
Yes.
Linda?
I abstain.
I abstain, yep. Is Mike?
Ah, yes.
And myself as a yes. Four with one abstention. Yeah, I agree with Noah. If we'd gone through a realtor, we probably wouldn't have gotten much more than that anyways.
Not after everything's done.
Right. So, all right, so now we have a request to write off a personal property account, tax account, number 854. And this is for a company that is no longer in business. The owner stated he moved out of the property months before the end of 2021, and waiting for his lease to expire so he would not be paying the taxes. Said this is the only remaining outstanding account fiscal year 2021. All other accounts have been collected through the year of 2021.
What is this mainly allowed out of School Street?
Mainly low.
What is that?
It's a medical marijuana from 398 School Street, from that facility.
Okay.
They have, sometime they had tenant, there's some turnover in those, in those spaces.
Okay.
So, they just, they went out of business, didn't tell assessing to get the, you know, next year's charge to avoid it.
Yeah, I'm sure there's somebody else moved right into that spot and we assessed their equipment. Yeah.
When do we, when, when is the assessing calendar for? Like, from what month to what month? Like, like, I just, I just, I had a business in Sanford. I moved out of Sanford, but I had to still pay the taxes for that year because I was still in town after the taxes were assessed, which was like April. So, I mean, are they, is it just the calendar year or what?
So, the date on this is actually September 2nd, 2020, for fiscal year 21. He's stating that he moved out prior to the end of fiscal 21, so where did, I guess it's the follow-up on Noah's question. You know, is he thinking 2021 is when he's out, or is their money due from 2020? I don't know if there's a, you know.
So, this, you know, this comes down to, no, this is something that we've gone through year after year with personal property accounts. We've sent them to collection agencies. We've tried to do collections ourselves, and we never get anywhere with that. Is, especially if people are no longer in town, is, so, it's $851.29 is the amount we're talking about. So, that becomes, you know, how do we, how do we go about collecting this? You know, we, we don't write it off. Is, are we going to just keep sending notices? Is, you know, do we just keep running our bills up?
Is it something you can take to your small claims?
I don't believe as a town we can go to small claims.
Can't put a lien?
He's not in business.
Oh, no real estate or anything?
No, no.
Don't waste that time.
Yeah, no, Mike and I have been through this. We, we went with the Thomas Collection Agency once, and we had, you know, like, $15,000 of unclaimed personal property tax, and we got, I think, maybe $40 out of that.
Really?
Yeah, because they just ignore it, you know? They just, they just ignore it. Is, you know, if they live in town, there's a different, that's different, you know? There's that'll go knock on their door. So, is, you know, before Lisa, it was Maureen Finger, our accountant, was our finance director. She would go through it every year with us, the same thing. She would go through it every year with us, the same thing. And she's actually the one that finally convinced me for the smaller ones that it's not worth the town's time and money. You know, because now we're gonna start getting into, you know, paying for certified letters and things like that. So we, we just keep piling on debt with no realistic means of collecting.
We can always send it to a collection agency, say, forget about it. If they get it, they get it. If not.
Yeah. Now, like I said, we did that before, remember? We went with the Thomas Agency.
Won't cost us any money, though.
No, they, they take it, they take a percentage.
So what, better, better, we should get something out of it.
Yeah. Find, find a collection agency that'll take on an eight hundred and fifty-dollar debt for us.
Yeah. Presents zero.
Um, so, do we have a motion to write off the personal property account?
I'll make the motion.
Yeah, I'll second it. For personal property account, eight fifty-four. Um, I think we've discussed it enough. Is, I'll go through the roll. Is Noah?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself as a yes. All right, and now the request to recombine the special recreation revenue funds. Hey, we even had the ice skating rink fund still.
Is that that one they had right up there on the corner?
Well, we tried it, we tried it up at the old Esterbrook School a couple of years, and then we tried it out on the corner and.
Prestation, right? We tried it by the.
Yeah. Yeah, on the basketball court over there, and, and the weather never cooperated.
It never froze, yeah.
Yeah, we had, I think we had one good night of skating one time. So we have three hundred and fifty dollars in the ice skating rink fund. And then there's one thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty cents in the community center fund. And that dates back to the old Esterbrook School. Is that one time there was talk about taking the old gymnasium and converting that into, uh, community center. And there was a, uh, a fund and fundraising started for that.
Yeah.
It never went anywhere. And so that money's just been sitting there now. That facility is now the, the, uh, part of the police department, so. So we have the three hundred and fifty from the ice skating rink fund and seventeen forty-eight fifty from the community center fund. You know, Lisa writes that no activity since twenty seventeen. So combine them both and, uh, put them into the recreation expense budget.
I'll make a motion that we combine the two accounts, uh, move all the money to the registered, uh, registration revenue fund, or do we?
Yeah, I'll second.
All right. Um, I'll go through the roll. Is Mike?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself as a yes. So. Application for special taste testing event on Fourth Circuit Road by Jay Gray.
Looks like a good sign.
Yeah, it looks like.
Reading through this earlier, I was like, ah.
Um, this is at the, the, the Dun's Farm, actually. It's May seventh, two thousand twenty-two. Oddity by the Ocean is the name of the event.
Is that Linda from the Zoom? Is that, is that you, Jay? Or is that?
I don't know.
The top right there?
Yeah, it just says Linda. I don't know.
I, I talked to Jay, um, last.
What are you trying to talk?
Hello?
You need to talk to him.
Hello?
Hello?
Jay? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hello?
Hey. I'm trying to figure out video, bear with me here.
Yeah, it's all right, I know all about it. So, um. We don't have a picture, but we can hear you, so we can go from there. We don't need to see you. We don't need to see you, honestly.
Well, you're missing out on quite a, quite a picture, though. My cats are jumping all over my computer while I try to talk to you, so.
Um, could you give us a little background about what this is and what's going on?
Yeah, so we are, we're, we opened our brewery, Odd by Nature, in Cape Natick, Maine, uh, about nine months ago. Um, and we also own Food for Thought, which is our outdoor beer garden and restaurant in, uh, Ogunquit. And we opened that about three years ago. So we're planning to, uh, have a one-year anniversary to celebrate the brewery. And we invited twenty-five of literally the best breweries on earth that are our dear friends from all over the country. From, whether it be California and, uh, Miami, or, uh, Parrish is from Louisiana, like literally all over the country, to come up and celebrate with us. So what we're doing is, we've, uh, sold our tickets, we're actually sold out for the festival a month in advance, which is, we never thought that was gonna happen, but we're very lucky that it did happen. Um, and basically, we have five hundred people coming. Um, we're doing a VIP session, which is from eleven to twelve. For one hour, they get the head start on everybody else. And then there's a three-hour period after that where, uh, everyone else gets to come in. And we have four-ounce taster glasses that everyone gets. And everybody gets little four-ounce tasters of about fifty different beers from twenty-five different breweries. So each brewery brings two different, uh, small kegs, the logs, if you will, or slims. Um, and then every brewery pours a little taste for everybody, so people go around, wait in line. We also have, uh, three different, uh, food options that we're doing as Food for Thought as the vendor. So we have a, uh, grilled cheese station that we're doing with like Nashville hot chicken grilled cheeses and Korean pulled pork. Uh, tomato bacon basil, some fun stuff there. Um, we also have a sausage, a homemade sausage, hot dog, uh, station as well. And then we're doing, uh, two different lobster rolls, a garlic butter lobster roll, and then a candy bacon lobster roll, along with, uh, whoopee pies from Anthony's that's near us that they're baking as well. Um, so we have plenty of food. We have two pallets of water that's being donated by a, uh, water vendor, um, that's helping promote the, uh, the event. So we'll have tons of water for everybody. Uh, we have ample parking for everyone. We're gonna have over twenty-five different volunteers to help us, uh, with the space setting up Friday at Dun Farm, um, along with Denise and her husband as well. We have porta potties coming into the space, which we have eight that are coming in, along with two that are on site as well, so there'll be ten total bathrooms. Um, and then on top of that, we also, uh, you know, we'll be helping with the cleanup. We have some parking signs we have to, uh, kind of direct people from the main road. And then we're gonna have two volunteers with flags directing people off the main road to help with parking as well. Um, I've been to these festivals for the better part of the last seven years, and most of them are considerably bigger than this. Um, we were just in Miami over the last weekend. I just got back yesterday. And Wake Fest, which is one of the biggest in the country, has over two thousand people to it. Um, and I've seen a lot of them. I feel pretty confident that we're gonna be able to have an amazing event. Um, we also are having live music from over the bridge. They're a reggae band from, uh, Gloucester that I've known for the better part of a decade. And they just had the number one reggae album on iTunes, so they're awesome, awesome people. Um, we're also, uh, we had a custom pair of sneakers, Air Force Ones, Jordan Ones, um, that are being, that are being donated. Um, and we essentially repurchased them, and then essentially we're, uh, auctioning them off with two-dollar raffle tickets. And those tickets are then going to be donated to Operation Hope and Project Grace, which is a one-hundred percent volunteer charity out of Scarborough. Uh, that's headed off by the, uh, police chief there. Um, and essentially what it is, is it's a, um, uh, anti-opiate charity, um, where they help subsidize people's methadone and give people rides to and from treatment. Um, our restaurant donates five percent of our proceeds to that charity as well. So we wanna be able to do something good for it as well. And just generally, I think it's gonna be a great event. I think it's something we wanna grow it in size year after year. So we're hoping that as time goes on, we wind up getting a little bit bigger and a little bit bigger. And who knows what this could turn into three years from now, but we don't plan on having it anywhere else besides at Denise Farm, because she was the first one to take a chance on us.
So you, you said the event's already sold out?
Yes, the event's completely sold out.
Well. I don't know, I don't know now. Geez, I don't know.
Disappointing five hundred people, you know?
It is, uh.
We come next door to that, can we wander over?
I gotta say.
Originally, when we applied, you know, we had our state licenses, we spoke with Denise, and we didn't know that, um, there was anything required from the town because of private property. And I came in and spoke with James, um, and everyone in Town Hall, and then I went and spoke with the police chief and the fire chief. And everybody was super kind, and I did that a week ago just to kind of say hi. And, yeah, I just, I just didn't know, and I apologize for not putting in the application sooner. I appreciate you guys trying to expedite this as soon as possible. Um, you know, we wanna be good partners for the town of Berwick, and, you know, I live in Cape Natick, I'm local here. You know, I, I, I love the area, so I wanna be able to do whatever I can to be supportive.
So, I, so many questions?
Go ahead.
So, I did notice that you, uh, you have signatures here from the police chief and the fire chief, but you have five hundred people parked right off of Route four. And you don't think you need law enforcement to, to control traffic? That's a pretty busy road.
Well, we have, so we hired, uh, we do have a police officer that's going to work the event for security. Um, but in terms of police officers to control parking, I think we should be good, again, flagging people down from the, the road.
I'm not concerned about, I'm not concerned about the parking. I'm concerned about when people are coming off of Route four either to enter the event or leave the event. We've had some issues on Route four, especially right up the street at Kind Farm, with people turning and that. That's five hundred, you know, potentially even a half, two hundred and fifty, three hundred cars that day in that period of time. And so I'm not worried about a police officer at the event, I'm worried about traffic control on Route four.
Yeah, I mean, if that's something that you guys recommend, you know, at the end of the day, if that's something where we think it'll make the event better, that's, that's what I care about. I care about having the best experience for the people that are coming. So if that's something that you think would be beneficial, I have no problem with hiring another police officer to help with traffic. I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, the thing that would just be devastating is if there, like, it's Route four, it's fifty-five, we do have some safety concerns there, just out of the middle of the rubble. It would just be devastating to hear that.
Let's do it.
You have a great.
I'm fully on board for that, and I appreciate the suggestion, you know?
Yeah, that, that's, again, I think this is a great event. I'm like them, is how do you, how do you get in? My only concern is that the issue of Route four and traffic entering and exiting has been an issue for the last several months, the last year, actually.
About ten years.
Yeah.
Now, I do expect that if this event is very successful and you guys have a great time, that you'll bring another one back with that two thousand people.
And let us know ahead of time.
I don't, I don't know how many people we can accommodate. I think, like, we're also not trying to be, you know, that kind of a festival. I think if we grow in size, it'll be from, you know, five hundred to seven hundred, seven hundred maybe to a thousand. Um, you know, we wanna grow gradually, and also I don't wanna, you know, the thing that's funny about this is we're gonna lose money. Like, we sell five hundred tickets at, you know, seventy dollars, everybody thinks we're raking in the money. We're probably gonna lose somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen to twenty thousand dollars putting on this event. This is not an event where we make any money at all. It's an event where we promote the breweries that are involved, our friends, and obviously our brewery gets promotion as well. And we just get to do something cool that's good for the brand and good for the people that we bring out, and that's all I really care about at this point. You know, hopefully by year three, we can break even, but, you know, it's, uh, I think it's just gonna be a really special event that I think, you know, the state of Maine is known so much for craft beer, and nobody really does a beer festival. Um, and we wanna try to be the premier beer festival in the state of Maine and grow into that role, which I think would be awesome.
I, I love the event. I think it's a great idea. I hope it's very successful. Like I said, my only concern is the, the traffic entering and exiting on the floor.
No, absolutely, and I appreciate it. What do I need to do? Is that something where you guys can just put it in there and, and then we just pay it? Or do I need to go back to, uh, the police station and just apply for another police officer?
I think we put it in the approval of the permit that you add a police officer for that, and then you can work it out with the police chief. He'll put it up as a detail, tell you how much the rate is, and get an officer assigned over there.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, let's, let's do that. Thank you again for the suggestion. I appreciate it.
It is, one, one good thing is on Circuit Road there, it's, uh, it's that circular road, so there are two, two ways to get in and out. So, that does help a little bit, but I, like you said, the traffic, especially at the end of the thing when everybody's leaving.
Well, Kind Farms is busy all day Saturday.
Oh, they, they're busy all the time.
So you'll have.
It blows my mind.
So, um, all right, any other, any other, uh, questions or comments?
No, sounds like a great event. Good luck to you guys.
Yeah.
That's for sure.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it. Even if, uh, you know, if you guys go down, you know, even if you're not going to the event, you know, buying some raffle tickets, we appreciate it. You know, that we're selling raffle tickets for two dollars. Sneakers are once-in-a-lifetime designs by a really well-known design artist who's a friend of ours, and, yeah, they're really cool. And I, I'm hoping to raise, you know, at least five thousand, if not ten thousand dollars for the charity. And they do a lot of really good, good work with Operation Hope, and, uh, yeah, I think it'll be really cool to be able to give back and, and just have some fun. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for coming.
Well, we're not quite done yet. We have to vote on, we have to vote on it first.
I make the motion that we, uh, we approve the, uh, permit request with one amendment of, uh, that he contact the police chief and have a, uh, officer assigned for traffic control.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'll go through the roll. Is Mark?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself is, yes, but I wish I could go. All right.
I'm going.
You're just gonna walk across, I know you.
This is a heads up, because we sold out, and of course, everybody's like, oh, we didn't know, we didn't know. We posted lots of stuff about we might sell out. We could possibly, and I'm not saying definitely, I have to talk to Denise, we might offer a few more tickets. If that's what we can do, but we'll see.
All right.
We have one more, one more, just, uh, there is, uh, with the approval of the taste testing event, just so we have the.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we also approve the taste testing event located on Fourth Circuit Road in Berwick.
I'll second it. Any further discussion?
Yep.
Is I'll go through the rolls. Is Mark?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself as a yes. Good luck, guys. Can't wait to see you.
Thank you so much again. I really appreciate it, guys. Thank you for your support. And please keep us in mind, I, I mentioned to James, like, if there's anything we can do for you guys as a town, um, in the future, if you guys are doing an event or something like that, and we can donate some beer, please don't be strangers, okay? Thank you.
We have a concert that's really coming up in the summer, don't we, James?
Yeah. We always love doing stuff for charity, so just keep us posted, okay?
We'll be in touch.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, and good night.
All right, that brings us to York County Budget Committee Caucus's information. Caucus is to elect municipal and public representatives to the York County Budget Committee scheduled for Wednesday, April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. At six thirty PM at the York County Courthouse, forty-five Kenny Bunk Road in Alfred, Maine. So, is, any elected official that wants to be on the budget caucus can, uh, run for this. Is, um, I'm gonna run away from it as fast as I can. Um, I believe we have one open seat on the committee right now for this district. So, is, um, we, one elected official is a open seat.
The other one?
Well, there's, um, oh, I can't remember who the, uh, guy from Lebanon, I believe, with the, the, uh, one of the selectmen over there. And, uh, and then a public, a public one is Dana LaJoy.
Oh, yeah.
Is, um, the. So, I made that announcement. If anybody wants to go for it, go for it. All right, so then we come to the Community Development Block Grant.
So with, um, in the town, we're able to apply for CDBG grants. With Great Falls Construction as a co-sponsor. This grant is to do the facade for the, uh, building here at twelve Sullivan Street, the building that's being constructed right now. Uh, and Great Falls Construction will pay the, the match funds and any fees associated with this project. We did a similar, um, CDBG grant about fifteen years ago with a woodworking company. Where the town can, the town can apply for the grant.
Right.
Through the town. Um, I believe, I don't have the number of the company, but I think it's about the facade that they're, you know, seventy-five thousand dollars that they're requesting. It's a grant to help them defund the project a little bit, help finish the building. So I'm just seeking, um, your authorization to sign, um, the final application.
Yeah, I, I attended, I actually attended the, uh, public hearing. I was the only one. It's there. It lasted about three minutes. Um, is, uh, yeah, this is something that, you know, the, the state of Maine has through their, uh, development projects. And, you know, as James said, it was, it was, um, Little Harbor Window we did it with? Or was it the...
Traditional woodworking?
The one out on, on Route Nine, right, yeah, traditionally, yeah, that's right. And the same thing is, we, we went through it. They, they paid all the, all the fees and everything associated with it. And, uh, we, we're just basically the, the cosigner of it. Any questions? Any comments?
Were we gonna angle the parking spot in at an angle?
We haven't decided that yet.
For a long, for a long Sullivan?
Yeah.
Might, it might be a good idea.
Yeah, it was what we talked about, but, yeah.
I think we'll gain...
Get a substantial amount.
I know, and I think we should. We don't want his problem to be up, 'cause they don't have parking.
We, it's something we should look at. We can do it.
Definitely.
Yeah. Well, that's when we hire that engineering firm to, for the C thing, we'll talk to one of them. All right, so looking for a motion to, uh, enter into the agreement for the Community Development Block Grant?
I'll make the motion.
Any further discussion? I'll go through the roll. Is Mark?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself as a yes. So, that brings us to our quick claim deeds. We have then abatements and supplements. Hi, Karen, are you with us?
Yes, I'm right here. Hello?
How are you tonight?
Everyone?
Hi, Karen.
All right, we have a few things for tonight. Um, the first one is an abatement, uh, for, um, this is a, this is a, um, a vacant parcel, um, in which the property owner thought that, um, uh, a split hadn't been processed from back in two thousand and, uh, fourteen. And as it turned out, when we did the, you know, and they, they submitted an abatement thinking that they've been overvalued all these years, um, and they have not. We reviewed the plans, we reviewed the deeds, and, uh, we both determined, after he had already submitted the, the abatement, that, um, uh, that the lot split, that created the map, um, R fifty-four lot thirty-one dash two was accurately processed in two thousand fourteen, and that the current assessment is not an overvaluation. So, because the property owner failed to prove that the property was over-assessed, it is recommended that this abatement, uh, request be denied.
Any questions for Karen?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just a little confused. So, this is, this is an abatement for the, for the, for the most recent year, or recent two years, right? And, and, but basically, because it's something in two thousand fourteen, that their property is being misvalued?
Yes, so they were, they had split off a piece from this. This is the mother lot, the remaining land. And the split occurred in two thousand fourteen, and for some reason, and there was some, they thought that the, uh, the split didn't occur, so that, um, but it did. And that they were, they, maybe, they were just looking at their assessment for the first time, perhaps in a couple of years. And we had the revaluation two thousand nineteen, so the values did go up. Um, but it's certainly not an overvaluation. Um, the lot split was processed as, uh, per the deed back in two thousand fourteen.
Okay, I, I have a clearer picture now.
Any other questions for Karen?
No, it sounds like he's already, uh, aware that we're gonna deny this, or most likely, presumably deny this, so...
Is that, that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to deny the, uh, the abatement for lot, uh, fifty-four dash thirty-one-one.
Second.
No further discussion. I will go through the roll. Is Mark?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself as a yes. All right, next one, Karen?
This one is, um, um, a fifty-point-six-acre parcel located on Lower Cranberry Meadow Road. Um, it's been enrolled in the Tree Growth Program for several years. Uh, the owners are George and Janie Gendron, and they obtained the property, um, back in March of two thousand and six. Uh, then the property owner split off an eighteen-acre parcel. Uh, they split it to Gendron Estates LLC back in, uh, in two thousand and six, shortly after they purchased this, this parcel. The property owner's name of the subject property was incorrectly changed to Gendron Estates LLC. And then it was changed to Cranberry Metals LLC when the LLC changed names, uh, back in June, sixteenth of two thousand and ten. So, all these years, it's been assessed to the wrong owner. However, George Gendron is the sole member of the Gendron Estate LLC and Cranberry Metals LLC. He recently stopped by the assessing office and made assessing aware of this error. Therefore, because the subject property was assessed to the wrong owner, Cranberry Metals LLC, it is recommended that an abatement be granted in the amount of three hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirteen cents. And, uh, have the abatement calculation form that follows the memo.
Yeah, looking at the supplement that's gonna follow, I'll make a motion to accept the abatement.
I'll second it.
A motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion? If not, I'll go through the roll. Is Mark?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself as a yes. All right, next?
So, you called that one. The next one is a supplement. It's about the abatement that we just, uh, processed. So, it's just, it's, right, so it's the same parcel. Um, it was, uh, it was not taxed, um, to the correct owner, and we are recommending, um, that this property, because it was assessed to the wrong owner, Cranberry Metals LLC, it is recommended that a supplemental tax be issued to the correct owner, George R. and Janie Gendron, in the amount of three hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirteen cents for the parcel, map lot R thirty-nine dash eleven.
I approve to accept the supplement.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? I'll go through the roll. Is Mark?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself as a yes. We're on the roll, Karen.
Okay, our last one for tonight is the, uh, farmland penalty. Uh, the subject property was, uh, placed nine acres in farmland classification in two thousand twenty. Uh, this classification provides for valuation of land based on its current use as farmland, rather than its potential fair market value, uh, for uses under the agriculture. On March thirty-first, uh, two thousand twenty-two, the assessing office received a written request from the owners Zachary H. and Andrea S. Broth to remove all acreage classified as farmland effective immediately. The farmland penalty is assessed, um, per the state law. Uh, the penalty is equal to the taxes that would have been assessed had the property been assessed at its fair, fair market value as of April first for the preceding five years, less any taxes paid during this period, plus interest on the difference. If the land has been in the farmland program less than five years, the penalty is based on the number of years the pen, the property has been in the program. So, this property has only been in the program for two years. Uh, so please see the farmland penalty calculation spreadsheet for the determination of the penalty. Um, this penalty, uh, spreadsheet was also provided to the property owner so they are aware of this amount. Therefore, it's recommended that you approve the supplemental tax bill for this farmland penalty in the amount of eight hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty-seven cents unto the property owner for the removal of nine acres from farmland classification.
Any questions for Karen?
Nope.